Okay, thank you very much for all of the people who worked today and thank you for Senator Kretlow for joining me today. We put together a PowerPoint presentation and we're doing our best to take a rather topic and make it fun. So I asked people to turn down the lights and sit back and enjoy and see how well we did at making health policy and politics fun.[29.01][29.01](Laughter). First of all, we have to talk about where we're at. Everyone knows somebody who has trouble affording health -- with affordable healthcare. We all here in Eau Claire know about the city council that was looking at a 57% increase that they had to start out with. Our school board is in trouble. Businesses struggle. We not only have problems with people that are looking at rising costs, we have many people who don't have any insurance at all. And up there are several farm families and all of us could tell stories about the people who don't have insurance. And we're looking at about 500,000 people in the state. What you may not know is that there are an increasing number of people who have health benefits, who don't have health benefits through their own employer. And this shows you some statistics in the United States and in Wisconsin where we're only looking at about 57% of the people who work in the state of Wisconsin have insurance through their employer, which leaves a large number of people that are increasingly not covered. What you may not also know is that the people who are covered are paying a lot more. And this shows that in the last seven years, people out of pocket have gone from $1,500 a family to almost $3,000, so almost doubled in the last seven years what the average person has to pay that does have health insurance out of their pocket. We're all paying too much. And although we're primarily concerned about covering the uninsured, many of us who look at this issue as a moral issue, when we look at what's underneath the uninsured, what we find is rising costs. We really need to look at why we're all paying too much. Why? Because it could be you, it could be me, that tomorrow doesn't have health insurance. People that -- it's supposed to be a pink slip that he's holding, but it kind of got washed out. People that have new diagnoses, that people that maybe want to do their own -- have their own business and take the risk like I did. We're all in the same boat. And we're going to use the metaphor of a boat for just a minute to talk about healthcare costs. This is the fun part. We're going to use the metaphor of the iceberg and hitting the boat. We see on the top higher premiums that we pay. Just yesterday, if you looked at the Eau Claire leader, you saw the increase in bankruptcies. We see increasing number of uninsured. But underneath the iceberg are the paperwork costs, poor use of the emergency room, uncontrolled chronic disease, poor health habits, and I could go on and on and on about why healthcare costs are rising. There are many, many different reasons. But any plan that is going to deal with healthcare, rising healthcare costs, first of all, has to look at how much we spend on administration. When we look at paperwork, we see a good third of the whole business of healthcare is spent on paperwork. In the state of Wisconsin, in $2,007, we're looking at $12.2 billion. There are many solutions out there. Some of these solutions, in my opinion, only rearrange the deck chairs on a sinking ship. For example, health savings accounts. We talk about health savings accounts. And when we talk about health savings accounts, often we forget that 80% of those healthcare costs are from 20% of the population. Well, if you have only 20% of the population that is responsible for 80% of the costs, very quickly, they're over that $3,000 deductible for health savings accounts. So we really need to look at other reasons why we -- other ways to bring down healthcare costs. Employee wellness programs. It may be a good idea, but it's not dealing with the fundamental problem. And then finally, the magic of the marketplace, which, as you can see by the chair that just slipped out the desk, just doesn't quite work in healthcare. By themselves, these ideas don't solve the problem, but they might be part of the solution if we change the system. So what to do? Well, Senator Kretlow and I think that one answer is Healthy Wisconsin.[284.83][284.83](Laughter). So let me tell you a little bit about Healthy Wisconsin. Everyone is covered regardless of their job. We deliver the right kind of care in the right setting. We deal with the underlying problems of unhealthy lifestyles and chronic disease, and we manage to get everybody to pay their fair share. People who are covered are those people who are not now covered by a public plan. So people that are not covered are people that are eligible for Badger Care, Medicaid, or Medicare. If you move to the state, and this has been one of the criticisms of the plan, you don't get covered unless you happen to be pregnant or a child, which is a moral decision that we made in the Senate. The benefits are the same than I and Senator Kretlow have as state legislators. We have all hospital, physician, and prescription drug care that's medically necessary. Mental health care is treated like physical health care, preventive dental care for children. And then again, to focus on what we want in the healthcare system, which is healthy people, we have no cost sharing for preventive care and for those people that have chronic diseases when they follow their chronic disease program. Here's an example of how much it will pay, how much it will cost. We're looking at an assessment for the average person, we're looking at an assessment for the worker of 10 and 1/2% for the employer and 4% for the employee. A family plan doesn't exist. All families are covered, all children are covered. For the average wage in Wisconsin, which is $42,000, this is what the individual and what their employer would pay. Co-payments, you see, again, our thinking is we need to bring people in so we don't have care, we don't have preventive care as a co-payment. But then we have a modest amount of co-payment for adults. Prescription drugs, we're looking at generic, brand name formulary and non-formulary brand name. And people, again, who are part of a chronic disease management program and are following that program, don't pay any co-payments. Other costs, we have a deductible, 300 an individual, 600 a family, a coinsurance rate of 25% of the bill if you don't see your primary care doctor, and then limits. What will say, what will stay the same? Providers will stay the same, will have the same kind of quality healthcare. What will not stay the same are the problems that all of us have faced in denying care, care that was denied, paperwork that was extraordinary, and insurance premiums that would not be paid the way they're being paid now. In this plan, everyone is covered. You don't lose your care if you get sick, if you lose your job, or if you retire. How does it work? People choose between competing networks or fee-for-service. There are low-cost, high-quality options. These are called the preferred plan. Other people may want to choose a different plan that allows you to maybe go anywhere you want it to go, rather than stay with the plan. All of the plans that you would look at are part of a network if they're one of those HMO-type plans. Everyone chooses their own primary care provider, and the networks provide all medically necessary care, including care within 30-minute drive of everybody that's covered. I want to show you what this plan looks like from those people that really like graphs and tables. This is a way that we collect the money through payroll deduction. The money goes to something we're calling the Healthy Wisconsin Trust. We then have options of plans, and the person down at the bottom chooses these plans. So as you can see, we have many choices for this person. These plans, for those of you who are the academic type, might want to know, these plans on the right are competitively bidding. They're bidding for a per capita or per-person payment. The plans on the left, the doctor and the hospital, are operating under what we call in the healthcare wonkish language, fee-for-service. And those providers would not only be paid on a fee-for-service system, but they would also be paid an incentive payment to change the incentives, to go to the type of chronic disease management, wellness-focused, preventive care type of system that we're trying to move to. The trust, which is at the heart of this plan, unlike the common misconceptions about it being government, is actually made up of us, the people whose money is at stake. It's made up of people who represent, in the third bullet point, business, labor, farmers, self-employed people, consumers. There are 16 members, and the members serve staggered terms. And the reason we put this together as we did was to make sure that it was not susceptible to politics and that it did not go through the state government. This is a fellow who invented this idea, the concept, the academic, the academic work that's behind the plan. Alan Antoven is a professor from Stanford University. In the 1970s and 80s, he came up with the idea of managed competition. Managed competition is a common way for state employees, the federal government workers, many different large organizations that want to bring down costs. It uses competition on the level of the plan rather than on the level of the individual. These are some of the ways that we cut costs. Streamlining administration, and we're looking at savings of about $1 billion there, lower drug costs, discouraging inappropriate use of the emergency room, especially in addition to that, using primary care providers, and then all of the other things that are related to reducing, rewarding healthy lifestyles, coordinating care for the chronically ill. By addressing these problems, we can shrink the iceberg of rising costs. We have healthier people, less paperwork, well-managed chronic disease. We can lower costs, which is the fundamental problem we're facing. When we do that, we help our businesses thrive, we help our farmers, because our farmers are paying very high rates in small market or individual plans. Patients have a choice. They no longer have to deal with denied claims. Healthcare providers benefit because of the streamlined administration, restoring that doctor-patient relationship, not having an insurance company tell you no, dealing with the whole issue of bad debt and uncompensated care. So what's standing in the way? Well, some of you have been reading the papers, know a little bit about the people who are not in favor of this plan. The people who are not in favor of this plan are many people who now make money off of denying care to people. They don't want to see change. And instead of saying, "Let's work together and figure out a better way to do this," they're using scare tactics. The scare tactics are, it's a government-run healthcare. It's the biggest tax increase in history. What we also are up against is political ideology. This was a cartoon that was in the Rice Lake Chronicle, where you could see the Assembly Republicans are on one side and the Senate Democrats are on the other side. And the Republicans are saying, "Pull the plug," and the Senate Democrats are saying, "Clear, we're ready to go. We're going to save this guy."[734.62][734.62](Laughter). What is underneath this is an ideology that we've struggled with in the healthcare business for a very long time. We see one side says, "We need regulation." And for the Democrats that are here, this is very real. There are Democrats that aren't my colleagues that very much want to see certificate of need and rate setting and price controls. On the other side are the Republicans who say, and the conservatives who say, "We need competition. We need the magic of the marketplace. We need to make competition work." I believe what we need to do is bring those two sides together. If we don't, we're never going to solve this problem. But if we do, what we can do is take together, working together, something that is going to take off the ground.[792.12][792.12](Laughter). Well, it wasn't quite perfect, but it worked. You get the idea.[798.51][798.51](Laughter). So to do that, I want to talk to you about what we can do all together. Senator Kretlow and I worked very hard at getting this plan done and getting it through the Senate. We've set this before you. What we now want to do is get it passed as part of state law. We want to iron out all the bugs in it and make sure that the people of the state of Wisconsin have all sorts of opportunities for input, which is why today we're starting the town hall meetings in Eau Claire, but we're going to take them all across the state and all across our Senate districts. But especially, you know, here in Eau Claire, we're really coming off of about probably 12 town hall meetings that have already been held in different parts of the state, and there's many, many more. So once you learn about the plan, if you're convinced that we need something like this in Wisconsin, please talk to your elected representatives and candidates that are out there, because now we're already seeing candidates that are running next summer. Keep the ink flowing. Letters to the editor, petitions, letter-writing campaign on the tables in the back, there's many opportunities for you to participate. Judy's waving a green sheet, which is a sign-up sheet that you can take. Spread the word. Number one, we need to talk to people in informal settings, informal settings, in opportunities for coffees, for town hall meetings, for chatting with your friends. We need to make sure that the information that we're giving today gets out. There are people who do want to provide a great deal of misinformation, and these people have a great deal of money. We may look like very wealthy senators, but let me tell you, we're really not.[897.81][897.81](Laughter). The money that we have isn't worth nearly the energy and the commitment and the time of the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of volunteers across the state that want to see universal healthcare come to the state of Wisconsin. Over and over again, I've said, people can beat money. That's why we're here. We want to make sure that the people of the state of Wisconsin have the best healthcare system they can have. The only way that's going to happen is if we all work together. And if that happens, we will have Healthy Wisconsin. And I'd like to thank my staff, who are way better than I am at technology and did a great job on this. So please join me in giving them a hand.[942.04][942.04](Applause). And then I'd like to invite Senator Kretlow to say a few words and to join us.
But I want to thank Senator Weinhoek, along with Senator John Urbanbach, and Senator Mark Miller, three Democratic members of the Senate Health Committee that worked on Healthy Wisconsin in writing up the proposal, in hashing all the details, listening to a lot of us with input both inside the Senate Democratic Caucus and outside, because they learned right from the get-go, since we started with three very serious plans that already existed, that when you're looking to meld different pieces and then bring in some new ideas as well, you learn what we all said during the campaign. There is no one perfect plan for healthcare reform. If there were, it would have been written by now. So there's something in this plan for everybody to hate, and that's okay, because it means we put together something comprehensive, serious, and worthy of your consideration. There are things in this plan that are not written the way that I would have written them. There are things in this plan that are written not the way that Senator Weinhoek would have written them if she could have written her version of the plan. But in the end, 18 Senate Democrats and a whole lot of support groups throughout the state came together through months of debate, at the end of years of people talking to their elected officials about the problem, and they presented this plan, Healthy Wisconsin, to you. And you will find, as you look at it and review it more, that it is a serious plan. It is a now plan. It is ready to be implemented now. It is a fair plan, fair benefits, fair costs. And it is a real plan. It really takes on the problem of insurance companies cherry-picking. It takes on the notion of the pre-existing conditions that have denied so many people proper healthcare security. It addresses the issues that you have been paying premiums year after year after year, and then when something happens to you, you're told, "No." Your doctor is told, "No. Sorry, I know you paid all that cash in, but we're not going to cover it." Under Healthy Wisconsin, we take care of that, and we take care of it in some very basic numbers. I boil it down to this: 15 is less than 17. It's that simple. Right now in this state, we collectively, as employees and employers, pay more than $17 billion in health insurance premiums. Healthy Wisconsin, through employer and employee assessments, will raise about $15 billion, and we will cover more people with less money. So when you hear the old scare tactic, "This is a $15 billion tax hike," well, then consider the $17 billion that you and I are paying right now as taxes as well, and I'll take 15 over 17 any day of the week. That's why this is a serious plan, worthy of your consideration, and I think of your support as well. On the way in, I think a lot of you, and you can hold it up if you got it, did you get an editorial from the Wall Street Journal? I am so made my night to see these nice folks handing this out. It did. I love the Wall Street Journal. I read it. I actually pay them money to get their paper.[1149.16][1149.16](Laughter). Because some people do this with Rush Limbaugh, I do it with the Wall Street Journal. I read the editorial page, and whenever there's "not" the word "not," I insert the word "not," or if there is, I strike the word. Basically, it is 180 degrees of proper, clear thought. So when the Wall Street Journal came out against Healthy Wisconsin, I dropped to my knees.[1169.91][1169.91](Laughter). I was so thankful that they said that they didn't like this plan. Because I'll tell you something, this will ruin the way --[1176.83][1176.83](Applause). This will ruin the way you read the Wall Street Journal editorial page from now on. And I don't know at what point it finally occurred to me, but remember the movie It's a Wonderful Life? The name of the banker, Mr. Potter, Mr. Potter. Read every Wall Street Journal editorial in Mr. Potter's voice up in your head, because it makes perfect sense. And the fact of the matter is, I don't know everybody in this room, but I dare say, almost every one of us in this room will never see the kind of money in our bank account that the writers of the Wall Street Journal and their favorite elected officials would like to see, which is nothing less than the full gentrification of our economy and our politics. They live by the golden rule. He who has the gold makes the rules. He who pays you gold gets to make the rules for you. You who pay gold to the insurance companies, the insurance companies get to write the rules. That needs to stop. We need to take on that mindset encompassed in the Wall Street Journal and so many other areas, and finally, somebody stand up for the rest of us. This issue's been talked about for 14 years or more, since the big healthcare debates of the early 1990s. And one political party lost all of its power in 1994 because another party said, "Don't listen to them. It's, you know, socialized medicine and da-da-da-da-da. We've got better ideas." I'm still waiting to see them. I'm still waiting to see them. And I'm hearing critics in the legislature, who've been there a lot longer than Kathleen and me, criticizing the plan. And yet, it took two new freshmen to help write a serious, comprehensive plan, and I can still turn to these veterans and say, "What do you got?"[1288.01][1288.01](Applause). You've heard Kathleen talk about health savings accounts, which may be able to play a role, can be a good thing, but not by themselves. And wellness programs, which again, can be encouraged. But wellness programs always trouble me a bit because they're tied to employment. Just like the current system, your healthcare is tied to employment. You might have a great health insurance policy. You might have a great wellness program at your workplace. Right up until the day you're laid off or fired, then it goes away. Why should our healthcare security be tied to a job that you may or may not like? We should have that portability on our own and be taking steps to get that way, and that's what we want to do. So from this point forward, we want to take your, we want to take your input. We want you to feel comfortable with this plan, whether it passes in the budget bill or not. And that's why I'm going to conclude things here, is to talk a bit about the process. We've been asked many times, "Why did you guys introduce this on a Monday and pass the state budget bill on a Tuesday?" And I will tell you why. We'll go right back to 1993, '94, the last time we had a national healthcare debate of this kind of magnitude. Had we unveiled Healthy Wisconsin any time before that, it just would have been more time for more Wall Street Journal editorials, more Harry and Louise ads, more scare tactics. We know in the legislature, and I've known from covering the legislature for just about 25 years, the state budget process moves about as fast as that iceberg that you saw in there. It is a weeks, perhaps months-long process. It sits in the conference committee. I was at the Capitol earlier today when they started just their second meeting. It's going to be a long ride. So they have plenty of time to digest Healthy Wisconsin, ask questions, maybe come around and say, "Yeah, we can implement some or all of this." So to say that they needed more time was simply them saying, "You didn't give us enough time to throw more mudballs at this thing." We've got time. The time for the debate is right now, while it's in the conference committee. The budget is still weeks or months away. That's why we're here tonight, in White Hall tomorrow, in Shipwell Falls at the end of August, and so forth and so on, to ask those questions and talk to your legislators, or get your friends to talk to their legislators in other parts of the state, and say, "You know, while this budget's still not a done deal yet, we think Healthy Wisconsin should be in there. Or we think it should be in there, but I would suggest this change or that change." That's why this process is set up the way that it is. So give us your questions, give us your comments, and I hope you recognize that this is serious, this is fair, this is real, and we've waited long enough. The time is now. Thanks, everybody.[1471.11][1471.11](Applause).
There are many, many, many different ways that the plan addresses cost. In fact, the fellow whose picture I showed you when he testified in front of the committee, he said that the different ways that this plan controls healthcare costs are as far as we could go in a tolerable, that would be tolerated by society, meaning the next step after what we've done is to go to some type of rate-setting, rate-regulation, certificate of need, where we really did have the government saying, "You will not build that new hospital." What we've done is we've used the idea of competition among competing plans. So all of those plans that are competing, and here imagine of Sacred Heart and Luther Mittiford and Marshfield Clinic and Gunnarson Lutheran, all create plans. Those plans all must follow rules. I mentioned some of the rules when I talked about what a network was. Those rules make sure that the hospital and the doctors are doing everything they can to control costs by paying them a lump sum of money, what we call per capita. They then are able to take care of the people that they have with that lump sum of money. If the people stay healthy, they can use the money to go buy their new MRI machine. They have the same incentives as the patients to stay healthy, provide high-quality care, and keep costs down. Now, anybody that's studied this knows that there are problems with both what we call capitated or per-person payment and problems with the fee-for-service system. What we tried to do was look at the problems with both of those systems, and in every case, make sure that if you were keeping costs down and providing high-quality care, you would end up better off, whether you were a patient or a hospital or doctor. So there are many, many different ways, but there, that's some of the idea behind it.
The competing plan notion is one right there. People say, "Is my health plan going away?" No, not necessarily. Whether it's, you know, Security Health Plan, or Anthem, or somebody else, they will still be, you know, submitting bids, and you may end up with, you know, some of the exact same players that you see now, but now they're competing with each other as opposed to, what competition is there now at your workplace? At your workplace, you're told, "This is your insurance company. This is who you can go to for a doctor." Oh, and then next year, we had to go price shopping, we got a different plan, so you got to go change your doctor. And then the next year, "The prices went up too much. This is your plan now, and now you got to go see a different doctor instead." I mean, we saw that at my former workplace, you know, year after year after year, where people had to change where they were taking their kids to the doctor. It doesn't happen under this plan. The other mention I want to make in the line of competition is just about, and we kind of give short shrift to prescription drug costs on here. I mean, we and our congressional delegation tried to move heaven and earth to save senior care instead of Medicare Part D because of that fundamental principle that senior care costs less money because we can buy in bulk, negotiate with drug companies for cheaper prices. Same theory behind prescription drugs in this case as well. When you've got 5 million people suddenly involved in Healthy Wisconsin, you can negotiate some pretty low prices for prescription drugs. And anybody who is or knows somebody on an intensive drug regimen can see what immense savings is going to be just in that alone.
Thank you.
Sure.
So if I understand the question, we're saying, if we, if we want to cover the uninsured, why don't we just cover the uninsured rather than change the whole system? Is that fair?
That's one way of looking at it.
That's one way of looking at it. The answer is that the system is broke, and everybody pays. If we only covered the additional uninsured, it would cost us more and continue to cost us more. We'd continue to have double-digit inflation for everyone. What we need to do is get under the hood and figure out why costs are so high. We're all paying for the uninsured. We're all paying the high costs. We cannot address the problems of why they're uninsured until we address the whole system. That's why we've, I've said over and over again, we need fundamental change. That's the image of the boat. We're all in this together. We're looking at the uninsured, if you think of the Titanic, as the people on the third deck. The people on the top deck are still rearranging the chairs, thinking they're not going to sink. But let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, this ship is sinking, and we need to do something about the ship.
And the problem is, a lot of the passengers find themselves switching decks. We, for years, have treated, or I should say, certain people in power have treated the uninsured as the great unwashed. Well, it must be their fault that they're uninsured. They must have done something wrong. Thank goodness, I've got coverage as a hard-working person. And then one day, you discover that lump. And then one day, you discover that lump. Or you didn't ask somebody to hit you with their car, but they did, and something happened. Now you've got these pre-existing conditions that make it nearly impossible to get coverage if you ever switch jobs or try to chase another policy. So the fact of the matter is, there isn't just one class of uninsured people. Every one of us, it seems, is that close to losing the coverage we have now. So it's not about just covering one particular group of people. But if you look at that particular group of people, as Kathleen said, we are paying for that care already. One of the criticisms of Healthy Wisconsin, for example, was, "Well, if there are undocumented workers here, you know, why are we covering them?" We're covering them now. When something happens, they're working as immigrant labor on a farm or in a factory, and something goes wrong, they go to the ER. They don't pay the bill. The hospital has bad debt. Under Healthy Wisconsin, if you get a paycheck, you are paying part of the assessment and you have coverage. So they're paying into the system, they're covered. Hospitals and clinics don't have the bad debt anymore. So we've tried to address this on many different levels.
There are another couple of questions asking how this plan will affect unionized employees, specifically public employee unions.
And we didn't even get into the property tax savings. I'll let you take that one.
We, there are so many different parts in this, it's hard to know where to start. But the answer to unionized employees is that if you have a contract that's in place now, that contract would stay in place. The bill is written to go into effect in January of 2009. When we were doing the research on the plan, we found out that most contracts would be up by January 2009. But there is an incentive for both employers, public employers, and employees to renegotiate those contracts. And the reason has to do with the large percent that public employees are paying as a percent of their wages. When we were looking at the numbers for the plan, we found out that roughly 28% of the total payroll for teachers goes into health benefits around the state. Roughly 25% of the total payroll for public employees goes into healthcare costs. We're lowering that cost to 14.5, 15% even if the employer picks up the additional 5% or 4%, I'm sorry. So what happens is that there's a great deal of money that's left on the table. It's the difference between that 14.5 and that 28 or 25%. With that money left on the table, when we add all the dollars across the state, we're looking at a cost of about 1.3 billion, billion with a B, billion dollars. That money is saved at the local level. It's money that the school district is paying, that local government is paying. It's money that's available for counties to be able to do what they needed to do to pave those roads. It's money that's available for school districts to hire that extra teacher. It's also, the legislator thought, money that needs to be returned to the taxpayers because ultimately, that's whose money it was. So the way we wrote the bill is to take half of that 1.3 billion in savings and return it to the taxpayers as lowered property tax. So we not only are able to cover the uninsured, bring all the people without very good insurance up to the level that Senator Creitlow and I have, lower the costs to people around the state, and return 1.3 billion dollars to local government. That, ladies and gentlemen, has never been done in this country before. And because we were able to do this, that's why Wisconsin is now leading the nation. That's why the Wall Street Journal is writing in a editorial attacking the plan.
And coming back to what was said during the campaign, I'm sure you remember a few radio ads that might have run a few thousand times, you know, "Pat Creitlow wants to impose a 14% payroll tax." And as I said over and over again, if an employer, especially a public-sector employer, is paying 20 or 25 or 28% of their payroll costs in health insurance, remember what I said about 15 being less than 17? 14.5 is still less than 28. It saves money at the public-sector level so much, and you're going to continue to see a drip, drip, drip effect over the next few days and weeks as counties and cities begin running the numbers on this plan. You're going to start seeing people at the county and city level saying, "Hey, wait now, we finally ran the numbers on this. This is what it's going to save us." And if they say, "We're going to save, you know, a million dollars a year," or whatever the case may be, and even if only 50% of that goes toward property tax relief and the other 50% is used for other vital services, not only has a small business owner now seen a savings on their health insurance costs for their employees, but they're also seeing a reduction in their property tax for their business as well. Sounds too good to be true, because it is, because there are people, businesses, who will be paying more than they're paying now. So let me address one of those questions before they come up. Somebody who's paying nothing for health insurance, chances are, is doing that because they couldn't find anything affordable out there. Now, as you saw the numbers that Kathleen showed, there's very few private companies that are going to give you healthcare coverage for the kind of monthly assessment that Healthy Wisconsin does. So yes, they're paying more, but now you have health insurance coverage, and you have the security of knowing that it's always going to be there. And at the public-sector level, again, you're not going to see these fantastic premium swings like we saw in the city of Eau Claire. Jerry Wilkie is a member of the Eau Claire County Board.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you. Obviously, this was something of great importance to Eau Claire County. I've been on Budget and Finance for 20 years now and have been struggling with, my icon? Okay, I'm sorry for that. Been on County Board now for 20 years, and during those 20 years, I've been on Budget and Finance. It's a passion because you want to get back to your community, and lately, it's been very frustrating as we see our community deteriorating because one of the major factors is the ever-increasing health insurance cost. So when this plan finally came forward, and I should back up, I'm very proud of this community, because when Eau Claire County Board put a referendum out there, overwhelmingly, this community says we want universal healthcare. There were a few board members, the naysayers, that said, "Ah, it's a feel-good resolution. Nothing will ever happen." Here it is. Now we got a chance. And I asked the Finance Director, along with our Chairman Bruce Willett, to run some preliminary numbers, looking at the bill, digging into it. And we're looking at it just for Eau Claire County. We're looking at 1,800,000 and some change of savings that would go to property tax relief, plus 1,800 and some thousand change that we wouldn't have to be spending in Eau Claire County. That's very important at this point, because right now, we're facing a budget deficit of having to decrease significant services in this community. There's no more trimming in this community. We're going to see some drastic changes if we don't get control of our health insurance costs. Now, the other analysis that we haven't done, and is far more complex than I can imagine, is what impact it might have on our human services costs if a number of those individuals have health insurance. We will make a good faith effort to look at that, but I know for sure, at least, there's 1,800,000-plus that Eau Claire County wouldn't be spending if this plan was in place.
Thank you, Jerry. When I said there was going to be a drip, drip, drip of county numbers, I didn't mean to imply you were a drip. And it was in your form, but that was a nice surprise. Thank you. I only mention it because today, during the Budget Conference Committee hearing, Senator Russ Decker gave the savings numbers from Marathon County. And he was then asked by one of the Republicans on the conference committee, you know, "We're not talking about Healthy Wisconsin today. You know, when can we talk about healthcare?" And Senator Decker said, "We are going to talk about healthcare every day of this budget negotiation process to get you to take this seriously." And I think now that we have these county numbers and more yet to come, it's going to continue to build pressure, not just in the savings for public-sector employees, but also, as Jerry alluded to, the cost of providing those human services or social services to people who one of their biggest problems has been the lack of healthcare coverage for some serious medical problems that they did not ask for, but happened by the grace of God, you know, that they have an affliction that one of us doesn't have. And now we provide that coverage in a fair way that everybody's on board with. One more note about public-sector employees, because I've been asked, again, in the Too Good To Be True Department, you know, "Why is it that so many public-sector unions have signed on to this plan? Do their rank-and-file members not understand what's going on here?" And my answer is, yes, they do. They do know that in some cases, they will be paying more and they will be getting a little bit less. My staff, for example, and I know a few other staffs joke about how right now staffers in the Capitol, their state coverage includes dental. Healthy Wisconsin does not. So they're making, you know, little tongue-in-cheek jokes about paying more, getting less because they won't have dental coverage. But you talk to just about any public-sector employee, you know, labor person who looks at the big picture, and they know that health insurance costs have been eating up any kind of take-home pay raise. And they know that this is a situation that is untenable, and eventually, it's going to lead to an actual loss of purchasing power in their paycheck. So they're saying, "Yes, we will step up, pay a little more, accept a little less, so that the savings in return can finally get us a little increase in take-home pay finally, instead of all of our raises being eaten up." So that's why you're seeing as much public-sector savings as you are under this plan.
There are a number of questions about are part-time employees covered? People who don't have jobs, how is that handled?
Yes, part-time employees are covered. Part-time employees pay just like full-time employees as a percent of their wage. People who don't have any income would probably be eligible for one of the public programs. People who don't work but have some income would be paying 10% of their adjusted gross income.
So in other words, if you're not yet 65, you retired early, and, you know, you're living off either part-time income or, you know, investment income or whatever the case may be, it's your adjusted gross income that you're paying a percentage of that. And frankly, again, that's where we see one of our biggest problems. People in their mid-to-late 50s and early 60s who want to be able to retire can virtually afford to retire, except for the health insurance cost. 10% of their adjusted gross income up to age 65 is a bargain compared to what they've shopped. They've tried to get insurance, and they don't have it. That's what I get most often are phone calls from people that have part-time employees, you know, maybe 59, 61-years-old, and they want to know what they can do. They may either qualify for programs out there already like Badger Care, or they're just going to have to take that cut in hours because, to qualify for Badger Care, because otherwise, they can't find private insurance out there. So we help a very vital part of, you know, our workforce or our force that does not need to work but for the high cost of insurance.
I think that it's helpful to imagine that we're disconnecting a particular job and health insurance. So you get health insurance because you're you, because you're a resident of the state of Wisconsin. If you start a new business, if you change your job, if you decide to retire, you're still covered under the same plan. So that particular job doesn't give you health insurance. What gives you health insurance is that you exist, which is the whole idea of the universal
There appear to be a number of questions regarding the mechanism for collecting money and why a payroll tax? Why do you feel businesses should bear the brunt of these costs? Would not a general services tax be a better way to finance this?
Oh, there's so many opportunities for different ways to finance this system, and I think that would be a great opportunity to have the debate within society about how we best want to raise the money. We chose a payroll assessment because it's as a way to collect the premiums, because it's the same way that people are paying now. There are many different options. I know Senator Miller very much wanted to have an income tax. Other people wanted to have some kind of an increase in the corporate tax. There's many different ways to raise the money. But we had to figure out a way that we could raise it in a way that was fair. That's why it's based on how much you make, what your wages are underneath that Social Security cap, and the cap is 97,500. So some people say, "Well, the people that are making 200,000 shouldn't pay the same, should pay more than the people who are making 100,000." Well, that isn't the way that we wrote the bill. We left that Social Security cap in place. But then, there are other people that are saying, "Well, the people that are making $10 an hour should pay the same flat rate that the people who are making $90,000 a year are making." And we say, "Well, no, we don't think that's a fair way to do it." So we used the concept of paying your fair share as a way to structure the way that we collected the dollars. Other people say, "Well, why are you paying this through a payroll deduction that goes to revenue that's collected like FICAs?" Well, the one thing that everyone agrees on is that revenue is very good at collecting So we already have a system in place that's very efficient, very simple, very easy to collect the money. But when the money comes in, it does not go to a state agency. It goes to a trust that, as we mentioned in the PowerPoint, is made up of people whose money is at stake. And that's one of the common misconceptions about the plan.
I always enjoyed in the news business kind of pulling back the curtain and showing people and talking on a public-access program about some of the debates and the mechanics behind how news stories and newscasts get onto the air. And I kind of enjoy doing the same thing from a political standpoint, because don't let our polished and very professional demeanor throw you off. This, these were some fights that, you know, 18 Senate Democrats had. We're newly in the majority, we're setting out an agenda, we're working on a budget bill, but at the same time, we want to work on healthcare reform right away. It's what we were elected for. It's what we heard in Joint Finance Committee meetings that were held all around the state, including Chippewa Falls, where people wagged fingers in both of our faces, saying, "We elected you to get something done about these healthcare costs." So we occasionally locked ourselves into hearing rooms and conference rooms, just the 18 of us and maybe some staff, and the fur flew over all kinds of different details about this. And, you know, there were some hard feelings now and then, and I will share mine with you, not to cast any aspersions on the plan, but simply to say that for all the talk about HSAs and how they alone are not the answer, I still believe that there should have been an HSA component, because people may want to save money for wraparound policies to cover things that are not part of this plan, have the tax deductibility of HSAs. But ultimately, you know, my position and a couple of other people, we were outvoted and said, "That'll have to be introduced as separate legislation, or when it goes to the conference committee like it is right now, maybe that's what leadership will negotiate. Maybe this will come out with HSAs and/or HSA tax deductibility." So all I'm trying to say is, this plan now is a very good plan with very good elements that I am very happy to stand behind and am happy to tell you about, flaws and all, because that way, you can come to me and feel confident in sharing your own concerns as well as your compliments. I keep asking for your complaints and concerns, but you can say nice things too if you like now and then, because you don't get paid extra for those.
There are a number of questions on how this plan would affect the elderly on Medicare, the Medicare supplemental insurance. Would they retire, they have Medicare, they have a part-time job, would it be assessed?
Thank you, and that's a common concern. Unfortunately, because we're not addressing this at the federal level, we can't address the problems in Medicare. If we were in Congress and we were passing something through the Congress, we could address the problems in Medicare. But we're not there. We're at the state level. The state doesn't have control over Medicare. So we did not deal with the whole issue of Medicare, which we agree is a complete mess. And if you ever want to see an example of what happens when the insurance companies and the drug companies write the legislation, look at Medicare Part D. But we couldn't deal with that problem. So the people who are working part-time will not pay the assessment. Medicare supplemental plans will not be addressed. The whole issue of all the problems in Medicare will not be addressed. And I would be the first to say, if we had universal healthcare at the federal level, that would definitely be the best step we could take. But we cannot wait. Ladies and gentlemen, we cannot wait. It is not going to happen in Washington. Wisconsin can lead the nation, but it's not going to happen in Washington. It has to happen here.
Even just before I left here, I was watching the network newscast flipping through and listening to President Bush again say that he would veto a bill that increases funding for SCHIP programs, which are children's health insurance programs at the state level. We passed a resolution in the Senate calling on Congress and the President to increase funding so that children could have healthcare coverage. And the President is saying, "Well, there's too much money in that. That's basically, you know, federalizing healthcare coverage for kids." We're talking healthcare coverage for kids! And he's busy fighting us on much less federal inaction year after year after year. So I get asked, we get asked a lot, you know, "Why are states even bothering with this? This should be a federal solution." Yes, it should be! But we can't wait any longer. And in Wisconsin, we've decided we are not- And in Wisconsin, we've decided we are not going to wait any longer. It's why Governor Doyle has showed tremendous leadership in calling for an expansion of Badger Care into Badger Care Plus, and it's why Senate Democrats took it even farther and said, we need everybody covered under a comprehensive and fair program. This is the real world up here. Real people need healthcare right now. And that's why we put it in the budget bill and are going to keep fighting for it every day until this is passed.
Before I go on to the next question, there's a person that drove here from Needlesville. He drove to the healthcare area, went on to, and then I heard him talk. I promised me to talk at this one next question.
Yeah, right here. Come on over here, Russell. I don't know how long to make this, but I guess what I'll do is just briefly go through what I had presented for a previous hearing, and this kind of tells my story. So it starts out, well, it starts out, my name is Russell Ratch. I'm a consulting engineer. This is my 30th year in private practice. And it's a small company. There's me and then there's one other family lives off of this business. And we do architectural engineering work. So I've raised my family and we've done well, but this health insurance is just really getting to be a big issue. So this is my letter I did for the state senate hearing. Full-time help wanted. Strong preference given to applicants with full spousal health benefits. Recent retirees on Medicare will be considered. Sole family breadwinner need not apply. This fictitious ad illustrates the huge depressing effect that runaway health insurance costs have on employment and entrepreneurship. When I started my consulting engineering business in 1978, my family's health insurance costs were less than $1,500 a year with a $250 a year family, $250 deductible family policy. By 2003, those costs had grown to $20,000 a year for two families with $100 deductibles. When I got my small group renewal notice in August of 2003, I was informed that my insurer was being bought out for market share reasons and not for cost efficiencies, and that my premium was going up 36% to $27,000 a year. At that time, I realized that I had hit the wall and that I could not stay on this ever-accelerating treadmill. I dissolved our small group. My wife and I each got individual $2,500 deductible policies from HERSP. That's a health insurance risk-sharing plan. And one of my employees switched his family coverage to the plan offered by his wife's employer. I reimbursed him $8,400 a year that covered the half of the premium that was deducted from his wife's paycheck. So I was able to keep my costs steady for a year, but the wife's employer's cost of doing business went up by $8,400 a year. He had to cover half of a policy that I was covering before. Since then, my costs have gone up to $26,000 per year, about a 9% annual increase that is still three times the rate of inflation. The other employer went to self-insuring in an attempt to hold costs down. My other, my third employee, who I had at that time, got his health insurance through his spouse. He has since moved out of the area, and I do not plan to replace him largely due to the current dismal health insurance situation. Health insurance costs are a huge deterrent to starting and expanding a business. In the small company service industry environment in which I operate, market forces do not allow me to pass along increasing health insurance costs. Of three of my major competitors, one gets his family's insurance through his wife's job at the public school, one is retired military with VA benefits, and one is over 65 on Medicare. So when I apply for a job, when I propose to someone, I start out with about $1,000 per project cost disadvantage because of my competitor's taxpayer-funded healthcare. Doing the math on the Healthy Wisconsin Plan, it would reduce my health insurance costs by at least one-third. But it would also level the competitive playing field by having everyone in my industry paying into the system to be a more fair basis for competing. Universal healthcare would not only save businesses a lot of money, it would eliminate the time and angst wasted in dealing with the present system in trying to provide for the universal human need for affordable access to quality healthcare. Claiming that empowering the people through their government is not desirable ignores the fact that Medicare, workers' compensation, and HERSP are very successful, well-run programs. Although the premiums for HERSP are high, set by law at 1.5 to 2 times the cost of a comparable private plan, they do not experience the wild increases of small group plans. I attribute this to three factors. One, the risk is spread over a larger pool, about 17,000 people instead of 2 people. The administrative costs are low, about 5% instead of 20%, and the authority is managed by a representative board instead of by a CEO with a billion-dollar compensation package. I am a pragmatist, and that's why I support universal healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
You know, Russell put it very well, and he illustrates a point that I've started to notice as I talk to more people about healthcare. You know, there was a time in this country where we discriminated in all kinds of different areas. We discriminated based on gender. We discriminated in employment based on race. We even discriminated based on nationality. Irish need not apply. What we're finding nowadays, whether it's a conscious or unconscious decision, is employment discrimination in small business based on spousal health insurance. I've got small business people telling me, one of the things they look for when they're hiring somebody is, does your spouse have coverage? I had somebody explain, and I won't have it quite right, but they were very happy that their small business workforce had one whose spouse was a teacher, one whose spouse worked at City Hall, one worked for a big construction company, and in another case, you know, they had four part-timers instead of two full-timers, again, so that they wouldn't have to provide benefits for it. And in return, that business has a competitive edge over the competitor down the street who actually has done the homework, jumped through the hoops, has the angst of wanting to have health insurance coverage for their workers. That's not good for competitiveness. That's not good for our economy. And I would think that some of our people who like to talk about, you know, free market and having a strong competitive marketplace would embrace these concepts of taking this whole equation right off the table so they can go back to doing what they got in business to do. I invoke this fellow's name a lot. His name is John Torinis. He's the CEO of a major printing corporation down in West Bend. And he writes a lot in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and he writes a lot about healthcare in the workplace. He's not a fan of Healthy Wisconsin. He is a big fan of wellness programs. He talks a lot about, you know, market-driven healthcare. I respect him a lot. He has put a lot of time and effort into having good employee healthcare programs. But I can't help but feel bad for the man, because every hour he has to spend working on healthcare issues is an hour he's not spending on his business, the reason he got in business in the first place. So I'm going to talk with him more about some of his concerns about Healthy Wisconsin, but I noticed that he's been a little sidetracked lately, because his company had to announce that of their 800 employees, he's had to lay off 25 because of, you know, a downturn in market forces in his particular business. 25 people that I know had great employee healthcare, but now won't because they're being let go. We need to help people like John Torinis and people like Russell from throughout the business spectrum. This is not some kind of a giveaway to people. This is something that is as good for business as it is for families. And that's why we're so supportive of it and hope that many parts of it will be embraced, adopted, and taken seriously by a lot of our other colleagues in the legislature. Just the opposite. Just the opposite. I've believed, and I said throughout the campaign last year, I said, a state that does it right and does it well will turn Wisconsin into a magnet, because businesses in other areas will say, finally, a state that is taking this seriously, where I don't have to go insurance shopping every year. I can come to Wisconsin, I know what I'm going to pay, it's a known entity, I don't worry about it, my workers are covered, I can stay in business for what I was meant to do, and they just reduced property taxes there as well because of all the public sector savings. So I think it's going to be a very positive impact, because they see a progressive, reform-minded state. We were the first with workers' compensation, first with unemployment insurance, going to be one of the best with healthcare reform. It's what's made us a leader in business, especially manufacturing, and it's what I believe will keep us there. Will some leave? Yes. Were they going to leave anyway, and now they have something to pin it on? Sure. But I'll be happy to look at the case study of any business that claims that, and I'm willing to bet we can run numbers that would show that they would have benefited by staying and expanding in Wisconsin instead.
I live in a rural area, and a lot of rural people do take jobs in town in order to cover health insurance in order for their whole family. And many, many people don't really want to be in those jobs, and they really want to start or expand that business that they're running off their farm. And sometimes it's custom combining, and sometimes it's auto-body work, and sometimes it's computer work. But what's standing in the way of them starting that new business in the little towns on Main Street is that health insurance bill that they know that they couldn't afford if they left their job working at the courthouse, working at the school district. So I'm very convinced by the people that I talk to that this will be a boon for our rural areas when we see that no longer are these people that are in small businesses really, the whole market works against them. They pay so much more than the businesses that are large businesses that are able to pool, to create that big risk pool. What we're doing is we're putting everybody in the same risk pool, the big employers, the little employers, everybody's in the same pool. And when everybody's in the same pool, then the risk is average and the cost is average. And that's going to help the small business people, that's going to help the farmers.
There are a number of questions that involve individual responsibility. Why not HSA as part of the plan? What does the plan do to preventive care, to make people have better lifestyles, to do things for lower cost in the area of prevention and individual responsibility?
One of the best parts, one of the best elements of the plan deals with that, you know, 80% of healthcare caused by 20% of people with chronic conditions, and the plan's saying, there's so much power put back in the hands of just two people, you and your doctor. And if you set up a chronic disease management program, you pay nothing extra. Now, at first blush, you're thinking, wait a minute, now that's going to drive costs up. No, quite the opposite. If people make a plan with their doctor and stick to it, and therefore don't need emergency room care down the line because they didn't follow their plan, or don't need the surgeries or the other procedures, we end up saving money. We've got to get people on wellness plans with their doctor. And it's not just their doctor. There's a lot of incentive for collaboration and communication here. You won't just be working with a doctor. Under the best-case scenario, these networks will be comprised of you, your doctor, their nurse, a nutritionist, or a dietitian, or whoever works with a particular pain management or chronic care management. You work as a team. That's what healthcare should be about right now. Not wondering if an insurance company is going to tell you can or can't go see a particular specialist. You and your doctor make the decisions. You work as a team to stay healthy or to get healthy. That's the kind of thing I think any of us would write into a plan, if any one of us were given a clipboard and said, write it up, is to encourage healthy behaviors. And to that extent, keep your costs down, knowing full well that if you don't follow the plan, not only are you jeopardizing your health, but you may end up paying for, you know, copays and ER visits down the road if you don't follow the plan that you and your doctor set.
Changing people's health behavior is key to helping lower costs. It's one part of a much bigger system. Yes, we need to do everything we can to encourage people's healthy behavior, to provide incentives for them to quit smoking, to follow their weight control program, to keep their diabetes under control. But we also need to address the problems within the system, so that the physicians don't have an incentive to ask that hypertensive patient to come back in two weeks, when it would be perfectly medically indicated for them to come back in two months. It's only that first visit that the patient controls. All the rest of the visits are controlled by the physician. So we need to make sure that both the physician and the patient have the same motivation under the system, which is to keep people healthy, provide high-quality care at low costs. We cannot deal with the rising cost problem until we deal with every part of the healthcare system, the administration, the insurance, the patients, the doctors, and the rules that government sets that work in our favor or against us. That's what we've tried to do with this plan. So there are many different ways that costs are controlled. A bit about it, health savings accounts. Health savings accounts may have a great deal of political, how should I say, appeal. But when you look underneath at what really drives healthcare costs, remember what Pat just said, 20% of the population is responsible for 80% of the costs. 80% of those costs, they've already used their $3,000 deductible. They've already spent everything that they saved in their health savings account. So it doesn't get at the underlying problem for why costs are so high. I'm agnostic about health savings accounts. It may be a good idea, it may not be a good idea. What I'm concerned most of is that we are able to deal with the underlying cost and the problem. Health savings accounts don't do that. We made a moral decision that it's good to have small business. We all know that if you're paying Medicare and you're self-employed, you pay both sides of that equation. You pay the employer and the employee. We wanted to make sure that small business got a fair shake at all this. That's why we had the rule that they pay 10% rather than 14.5%. Does the plan favor small business and self-employed? Yes, it does. Does it favor those who are retired? Yes, it does. Does it favor those that have a large number of children? Yes, it does. Does the plan favor those whose spouse stays home to take care of the children? Yes, it does. These are all moral decisions that we considered when we wrote the plan. We're here in a church. We're here because healthcare is a moral issue. We're here because many of us do believe that we all have an obligation to take care of each other. We do. We have that obligation. That's why we wrote the plan. And those are so many ideas that we thought of when we put the plan together.
Yes, first, I mean, say I support the plan. I do have a concern about the one slide you showed where there were the four A through D plans on the right, and then the two other plans on the left, and the individual person having to make a decision among those. What that reminds me of is the difference between Medicare and then the eventual Medicare Part D that came in, where originally the government negotiated with the companies and set up the rules and set up the schedules for everyone. Now, under Part D, the individuals have to negotiate and figure out between all the companies on their own, and that is causing a tremendous problem. I'm on the board on aging and long-term care, and we're having to add positions to the Medicare health line for that very reason, because people can't figure all that out for themselves.
I'm very appreciative of that, and there is danger in not going to the absolute single-payer plan, because there is a possibility to game the system. One of the things we tried to do very clearly was to set the rules for those plans that are competing. And if you want all of the details of the rules, there's a nonpartisan Legislative Council memo that's about 14 pages long. And on pages nine and 10 in that memo, it gives all of the rules that the networks have to follow, so that they don't game the system. The other thing that, yeah, the memo is being held up, but it's also at the back table. The other thing is, if you look at about page 13, is there's a whole procedure for consumer advocacy, for ombudsman, for organizations that perhaps as yours to play that role as the ombudsman, and for consumers to deal with any issues that are related to appealing decisions that are made, or addressing complaints about anything that's wrong in the system. This was a particular concern among many of the people that drafted the plan, that we had in that plan a self-writing process, so if there were problems, that we had a solution. And I'd like to publicly thank my staff person, Darcy Haber, who wrote that particular section of the law. Thank you.
First of all, I want to say it's rare to hear the term "moral decision" come out of the mouth of a politician. It's refreshing. It's refreshing. Your presentation hasn't really made clear to me what will happen to the individual who is unemployed, and I do some volunteer work at our local free clinic, and there is, there is a significant population of people who either can't find jobs or won't find jobs, or for some reason can't hold on to jobs, and it seems like your system is based on the employer-employee contribution, so would you speak to that, please?
You bet. I'd love to. We disconnect health insurance from a particular job. You get health insurance because you exist. If you're eligible for a public plan like Medicaid or Badger Care or Medicare, you are not eligible for this plan. If you do not get Medicaid, Badger Care, or Medicare, you are eligible for the public plan regardless of your employment situation. You get healthcare because you are you, because you exist.
Okay. I, I have friends that live in Canada, and they've had nationalized healthcare for years and years and years. My friend Emily blew her anterior cruciate ligament a few years ago, and for most of us, no big deal, right? We go to the orthopedic pod, and in a couple days, you're in surgery, boom, you're done. She got to sit in a cast for four months, waiting for her number to come up, crawl into a crowded Air Canada Airbus in flight of Toronto for a surgery. Why did she have to do that when she used to be able to get that surgery in there? Because that's what the government of Canada did to control their healthcare costs after so many years of nationalized healthcare. I'm very concerned that's going to happen here, because you're, you're going to have to control costs at some point. My other comment is, my feeling is, any hope of reforming healthcare in, in this state or in this country is almost pointless unless you do some tort reform to get the personal injury attorneys under control. And without that, it's not going to happen. And one last comment on my personal case, I'd crunch some numbers. I'm a small business owner. I have 16 employees, most of which are covered under a health plan, all the full-timers are. My part-timers are teenage kind of workers. My cost will go up significantly under your plan, my cost of healthcare, and I've got very good healthcare coverage. My, my average increase per year has only been 5% over the last 10 years, and so these 19, 20%, somebody's, somebody ain't doing a very good job chopping, because it's out there. I also would like to say that you have an opportunity here to make businesses in Wisconsin even more competitive by taking this, this burden of healthcare away from the businesses and away from the employees and putting it on to an expanded sales tax, which I generally oppose, but in this situation, the itself, if we could pay for it by expanding sales tax, that would be a much more fair way, because then the consumer of the services is paying for the service, and would take a burden off. If you could relieve the employers of Wisconsin, the small business people, of the cost of health insurance, think of the competitive edge we'd have then. Thank you.
Thank you.
The basic points to that is, we absolutely have not found a country yet that has a flawless system, and whether we're talking about Canada's flaws, or goodness knows how many flaws we can document in the US system, there will still be cases where those exist. There will still be cases where malpractice exists and cases where malpractice suits are frivolous, and we need to work on all of those areas to reduce them. For those people that are only seeing, say, a 5, 6, 7% increase in healthcare costs, I don't have a lot of faith that it'll always be that way. You just haven't hit the whammy yet. It'll come if we keep the system the way it is right now. I wanted to, to point out as well, Bill Osmolsky from, from News 18 is here as well, and I, here, I thought we were going to be the, the main story tonight, but he, he tells me, and I was just looking at the Star Tribune website to, to confirm it, that the Interstate 35W Bridge over the Mississippi River collapsed during rush hour in downtown Minneapolis, dumping anywhere from eight to 20 cars into the river below. So, for those of you that might have friends and family in the cities, you might want to give them a call, just to, to see their impression of things that are happening there. I know Bill, Bill Station and certainly plenty of others will have details on that later, and I, I don't mean in, in any way, shape, or form to dovetail this into something healthcare-related except to say that there's so many things in our life that happen by circumstance, by chance, things we do not ask for, the accident, the disease, the layoff, the injury, these are the things we're geared toward. You know, we've been accused of coddling the guy that chooses to eat eight cheeseburgers a week, and now suddenly he has healthcare coverage. Well, he probably does anyway through work. I'm not worried about the guy that eats eight cheeseburgers a week. He's still going to, and he's still going to have the heart attack. We're talking about the people for whom life happens, and that's all of us, and that's why we're working toward this. So, we will be around afterwards to take your questions and comments as well. So, I just want to thank you all. I want to thank Senator Vinehall for helping put this on and inviting me to come down and join her as well. Thank you.